Um, the meeting being held in accordance with the governor's executive order?
Vice Mayor did do that at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, I must have been fooling around.
And Vice Mayor, you taking over from here, I'm assuming?
Um, I can do that. You're doing a great job.
Okay.
Uh, let's see if you can have a good time record.
Uh, yeah, I got two minutes down here. And then, uh, when we get to consent calendar, Mayor, I'll pass it over to you.
Okay.
You could mute yourself. I could mute you, or I'm hearing, we're hearing background from somebody's location.
And Annabelle, have we received any call or written comments?
We have no written comments. I, we do not have any calls.
Okay, and then at this time, I'll pass over the meeting back over to Mayor O'Brien. Is there a lag, or is the mayor muted?
Mayor is muted.
I had unmute myself, sorry. At this time, any public comment on the consent calendar may be sent during the next two minutes via email to thecityclerk@riverbank.org, or by calling 209-863-7172. Okay, the consent calendar consists of item 3A wave readings, item 3B approval of March 14th, 2020, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board meeting, that's April 14th. And item 3C, consider adoption of a resolution approving the execution of the measure L master funding agreement between the Stanislaus Council of Governments and the City of Riverbank for the fiscal year 2020 through 2025. And approve the city manager to execute said agreement. Are there any questions or comments on the consent calendar? Annabelle, have we received any call or written comments?
Mayor, we have not received any written comments. And there are no calls.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar items as presented?
Vice Mayor, you rebate here, I'll make a motion, we approve the consent calendar as stated.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I second the motion.
Motion by Vice Mayor and a second by Councilmember Barbara Martinez. Roll call, please.
Council Authority members Campbell. I'm muted, but he's out. Council Authority member Campbell.
Yes.
Council Authority member Fossey.
Yes.
Council Authority member Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Chair Uribe.
Yes.
Council Authority member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.1, new business. At this time, any public comments for item 6.1 may be sent during the next three minutes via email to thecityclerk@riverbank.org, or by calling 209-863-7172. Item 6.1, general local public health COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Aaron. Uh, good evening, Council. Um, as they're pulling up a, a quick PowerPoint here, um, I'm not gonna, since this is like the sixth time we've gone through this item, I'm not gonna go through all of the history to this. Um, assuming everybody's, unless you've been living under a rock, you're aware of what's happening. You, you can go to the, uh, next slide. So just to sort of start the, uh, discussion, um, I'm gonna go through some data with the council just to give you a little idea about what's happening statewide and also locally. This was pulled off of the, um, state COVID-19 website just before this meeting, so this is about as recent as you can get. Um, you'll see that we're nearly at 70,000 cases, probably will break that by tomorrow, I'm guessing. And you'll notice that the, um, uh, one of the things I thought was interesting was the, the age breakdown is not quite what you'd think. You have, um, you know, roughly half, or less than half of those cases in age 49. And, um, unfortunately, we're at, we are at 2,847 fatalities. Um, here's some statewide case statistics. I mainly thought this was interesting. This is from California Department of Public Health. Was it, we talked a lot about the curve and bending the curve and what that means. And so you can, you can see that if you're tracking back to essentially March 22nd, which is when their data points begin, you have pretty steady rise, and then you see peaks and valleys where, um, you're having days with significant increases and days with uh, less so as well as deaths. It'll show you Stanislaus. You may have to move around your video there, um, but essentially it's, um, a little different than the statewide one because you'll see that for a really long time, a good, uh, three weeks, you experience no deaths in the county. And then over the past month, essentially, you started to see those rise, and then particularly recently with the, the Turlock Nursing Home issues. Also, you can see that we're following sort of a similar spiky model, um, as to confirmed cases. Next slide, um, I thought was interesting to throw in here, there's only two more charts, so then we'll get to the part of the matter, but, hospitalizations, in particular, one of the things that we talk about a lot is, well, what's, how many new cases, what about deaths? And while those are important, probably just as important, if not more important, is the ratio of available, uh, beds and hospitals, ICU beds, and most importantly, probably ventilators. And you'll see that, um, we are actually seeing a decrease in daily patients hospitalized that are confirmed COVID-19, dating back to late, late April, and our ICU ratio and ventilator ratios are very, very good compared to some other areas of the state. Now, on the ICU component, um, just because, uh, we're at 54%, my understanding is that does not necessarily mean that those are all COVID cases. And, um, but what it does show is that the surge concern that we had in the beginning has not quite become a reality, at least yet. It looks like our current, um, capacity is able to hold for the. The next slide is also, uh, interesting. These are, um, uh, tests and, uh, death tests, and I thought that, that what was interesting about it is you can see, there's two data points that are interesting. One is you can see the increase in our, uh, the amount of testing that has started to occur. It's still a little bit, uh, touch and go. If you talk to some folks that have been to either been tested by themselves or checked out of testing facility, we're hearing that, uh, a number of, um, you'll have a day with 30 or 40 scheduled tests, and you'll have 15, 10 or 15 people watching show up, so a lot of no-shows. But positivity rate 6.4% exactly is, is saying that's pretty much consistent with what we see elsewhere, right around 5. Uh, if you head to, if you head to the next slide. Okay, so quickly, uh, these are timeline updates. On, on May 5th, Dr. V, uh, our current public health official, issued an amended public health order which relaxed some restrictions. This happened almost exactly the same day as the governor made an announcement regarding Phase 2. Uh, the governor made an announcement regarding Phase 2. He then subsequently said, "In a few days, I'll be releasing, uh, criteria that will determine when you can move beyond that." So later that week, we received those criteria. There, there's a number of data points, um, that are involved. Two key criteria, two key problems here in Stanislaus County locally are code enforcement, that's the enforcement criteria, and that there should be at least 1.5 that's given daily for a thousand population, uh, currently population is around 545,000. Not fair, um, and it could be for a variety of reasons. Availability, people actually going for tests. And, uh, I don't know that we have total data on all of the private type testing. So the next slide. And then, um, today, May 12th, the, uh, this morning, the Stanislaus Board of Midas attacked, and the public health orders by Dr. V. Additionally, the county directed that no county resources, uh, be used in the enforcement of the state's availability. The one part is, um, they're looking at the, the Dr. V's orders, that it did not, certain portions related to, uh, builders, facilities that were more strict, the state guidelines were.
Sean, can I, Sean, can I clear, can I ask a question here? So it says they're not, they're not gonna direct any resources for this, so for the gym that's gonna open in Oakdale, they're basically saying, "Go for it."
Well, so, um, one of the clarifications that the CEO made, he said that it is, it'd be clear that there are two elected officials in the county that make their own individual decisions about enforcement of that's a district attorney and sheriff. Um, our understanding has been that, that the sheriff at least was going to be fairly consistent with county guidelines here. And, um, the individual jurisdictions, the cities in Stanislaus County will be able to police this order how they see fit. Um, so for example, if it was happening in Oakdale, and Oakdale decided they were going to make sure they were enforcing the state guidelines, they could do so. Um, I think it would probably be, uh, that, another example might be if there were a gym, let's say, just outside of Oakdale or Riverbank, and they decided to open up. My understanding, at least at this point, is that unless they're breaking the mass gathering rule, they're not going to wreck, affect resources. But that doesn't mean that, and we'll get to this later, but that doesn't mean that they may not suffer consequences from state licensing agencies, like. We'll get to that, that in a second. Um, and then, yeah, city enforcement may, may continue with the procedures currently in place. Some updates just for us here locally, we'll be talking more about things related to recreation, you know, in the next item, so we want to get into that, but, this department, um, at, um, Maricela's request, has created a reopening plan, uh, that we can put into place, uh, when council chooses to reopen offices to the public. Precautionary measures are being put into place. We have city guards in City Hall South. We are working on putting in a full security setup that isn't just, uh, related to COVID. It's something that we've needed to do for a long time. And, um, we have, um, essential, essentially a plan in place that when appropriate, we'll be moving certain departments back to different schedules, and when appropriate, opening our doors for, um, the public. We could talk in a, I'm actually gonna pass it to Maricela for a moment. Um, a lot of the decision related to opening to the public is certainly but it's also, uh, related to what plans and decisions are made with council regarding certain services in recreation. So, for example, um, you know, if, if the next item, council were to wanna move forward with certain things, we'd probably have recommendations that we, uh, resume normal business schedules and open to the public, or City Hall North Recreation and Public Works, uh, the last week of this month. For City Hall South, it's a little more tricky because you do not have, it's a much more cramped building where staff are much closer together, and so it's more difficult for us to create a plan that would include complete return versus the bifurcated schedule. So we've kind of thought that when it's appropriate, um, and, and the protective measures are in place, we, we may, uh, propose to council some sort of modified schedule for City Hall South, there are specific hours where they're open, where we can with, you know, our, our split schedule, it's south only. But, um, Maricela, I know I kind of stepped on some of your thoughts there, but do you wanna add anything else to that?
Um, just in terms of some of what we're doing at City Hall South, since they primarily handle the largest amount of customers at the counter, both in the finance department and in the building and planning department, um, we will most likely continue the modified schedule with them. Uh, we do have quite a few employees in that building who are already set up to, um, remote work. So the majority of them, we may end up having them continuing that, um, so that they can continue to work while they're at home. Um, but obviously, the safety glass is gonna be of utmost importance when we open the building. Um, to begin with, as, um, Sean mentioned, we are looking at modifying hours, um, until we're able to bring back full staff. So we would have limited hours in the morning, um, and some limited hours in the afternoon, um, for customers to come in. Uh, we would continue to make sure that we're social distancing, so we will need to think of a plan as to how we're gonna manage that at the front door. Um, that may require that we bring somebody in, perhaps an intel or some other security, um, team to be able to monitor how many people we allow into the building. Um, as you might recall, that lobby is fairly small, um, same with the recreation lobby and the City Hall North lobby. So we will need to think about how, um, we're allowing people in to make sure that they're still social distancing. But if the next item regards, um, relating to parks, um, goes forward, then we would be looking to bring most of Parks and Rec staff, um, back on immediately, so that we're making sure that we are, um, doing the proper maintenance to all of our parks. Um, we would look at bringing back, um, City Hall North staff, um, probably at the end of the month. And then if we have all of the safety guards installed, um, then we would reopen to the public in June. Um, once we have a full clearance from the county, then we would resume normal hours and normal schedules for everybody. Um, so the hope is to be able to reopen Amelie City Hall North and Public Works, um, to the public starting June 1st, um, with the hopes that the safety guards will all be installed. So that's the goal we're, we're trying to reach for right now.
Thanks, Maricela. Um, and then, um, one last slide. So, uh, related to, uh, Vice Mayor Reba's question, so our recommendation is, personally, having worked a lot of code enforcement, and I know, you know, our staff doing so as well, um, one of the positions that I think, and I'm not necessarily criticizing the county's decision here, but from a consistency standpoint is concerning is that, um, you know, we, this is a, the type of thing that we do receive complaints on, and we have received regular complaints on. And, um, since there is a state order in place, we do feel the, the importance of, of at least getting out and responding to those complaints as they come in. And so we would recommend that, that, uh, the council, uh, bless us moving, continuing to enforce on a complaint-driven basis, uh, and we'll be using code enforcement as sort of the lead, as we have, uh, to make contact with businesses that are not, you know, appropriately following the rules, and only in the worst circumstances use citations if necessary. Uh, and, um, any other business-related ideas where we can be flexible and help with compliance order, we're, we're trying to do this all. Open to any ideas along those lines.
That's pretty much my report on this, out of most of what we wanted to discuss.
Hey Sean, um, I know code enforcement is having, uh, a big backlog throughout the city, so if we're gonna hire anybody, instead of having them be in a door monitor at City Hall South, we may wanna, uh, hire another, um, uh, code enforcement and use a buzzer system, Maricela, for City Hall South. You know, you, uh, no one comes in until you have a clerk available, and you buzz the next one in. Put your six feet, or now 15 feet separation between, uh, one system and the next, one person and the next. So it'd be a lot easier to control from City Hall South. I would, again, uh, Councilmember Fossey recommended that we look at, uh, the LRA. I still think we should move the planning, um, or some, one of the, the teams out at the LRA, and so you could open up and have more space between, uh, the, the employees. And at the, uh, uh, prior to you opening up, you have a, a flow path on the ground where people can walk, what direction, so they don't turn a corner and bump into somebody else. That's my recommendation on that. As for businesses, I think we, as a council, we're very creative. We should get very creative in our local restaurants. Right now, our restaurants can't open other than curbside. However, you can have outdoor restaurants, if you have the proper distancing. Well, if we say restaurants, you only can have 25% of the people, well, why don't we open it to air, take away 50% of the, um, uh, parking spaces around that, those restaurants, and have them be creative in how they, they do the ordering and how they, they do the service, and stay within the guidelines of the, uh, the state. I would also recommend that, that we hire a healthcare professional to check out the staff on a weekly basis, checking their temperature, keeping their privacy, and making sure that, you know, no one has a fever, again, at the same time, uh, give them education on what you're looking for, if you're feeling certain ways, uh, uh, don't come into work. Uh, and work from home. And if they can work from home, no matter if we get back to Phase 3 or Stage 3, the recommendation, if you can work from home, you work from home. So, um, I think we can be creative in some of the businesses. Uh, gyms have specific protocols if they're going to open up, and I can, uh, bet that, uh, the 82 gyms in LA, and LA has not met any of, any of the guidelines by the governor. So, um, we take it, uh, with the guidelines that the governor's put out. There's a good-to-go Stanislaus guideline that has been produced. We use it as a guideline when we have the code enforcement going on in and checking out businesses. Uh, those are my recommendations. And if you haven't seen the go-to Stanislaus, it's a pretty robust document for every business except for the grocery business.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, um, on City Hall South, is there a cover outside that if the sun is out and we have two or three people waiting, that they will be out of the sun? If not, we're gonna need to do a pop-up or something to keep the sun out of them, because June, July, August is gonna be pretty hot. Regarding a healthcare professional, unfortunately, Mayor, I don't know that we have the money unless the state's gonna pay for that. I believe that we could do what is happening at a lot of companies, which is, uh, have a form. And before anybody starts work, uh, their manager supervisor, uh, the appointed person checks their temperature, and they noted on, uh, a form, no, 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 that they didn't have any of these symptoms. And then they go in. Um, we can't afford a healthcare professional. We're gonna have issues down the road with that, but.
They have a million dollars in our safety fund.
We're gonna need that money for other things. I, I think a healthcare professional is somebody full-time that we don't need to do. I think we could have somebody with a thermometer that checks everybody every day, and they ask them four or five questions. Have you had a fever? Are you coughing? Can you breathe? And if they say no to all those questions, then they're allowed to come into work. If they say yes to any of those, then they're sent home. That's what we're doing at a lot of the cities, and it seems to be working well. There's a lot, not a lot of people with a lot of symptoms to have a healthcare professional.
I'm not saying full-time, just on a weekly basis checking us out, making sure we're doing it right.
Well, I think we could do that with, with this form, and, and I can send that over to Sean if you'd like.
Well, it may be that some of those sorts of measures, you know, could be reimbursable under, you know, our, disaster funding, but I, I think that, in general, I think Maricela can speak to this. There's, we set up a fairly good system for, uh, employees here that, um, you know, notify us if there's something, can, talk to HR and notify them if there's something concerning. Um, and if we have a sick, you know, a person calling sick, we're following up just to make sure that if, if those people need to actually be cleared by a physician before they come back to work, they're doing so.
They, they have thermometers that you don't even have to touch the skin. You stand away, you know, and, and it tells the temperature. So there, there's no, it's not, you don't have to be close to a person. You can even be pretty much six feet away, and it'll read it.
Yeah.
And that's the biggest thing. Then again, by the time they have the temperature, it's bad.
I think at this point, we probably, we, we have a, a fairly good setup in South about, with, with regard to distancing and, um, and this really only becomes an issue if we get into the summer and all of our staff are back at City Hall South.
Right.
We're gonna need some sort of solution. So, uh, the mayor mentioned this idea to me a little bit earlier, and I need to go do a little bit of research about whether we could, you know, find something, um, that might need that criteria, but I, I, I just need to do a little bit more research on it.
Yeah, there's also.
If you had a thermometer, remote thermometer testing you. The, the other day.
I've had my temperature taken every day for the last two weeks.
No, with that remote one?
Uh-huh.
Mine was 83 degrees. That was the lowest.
79.
Very good. So I don't trust it. But, so. We're.
I would like to make a suggestion, if I may. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This, Member Campbell. I was watching, uh, some of the things going on today, uh, with the, uh, federal government that was being televised. And they mentioned several times that they're getting more types of testing kits, and I don't know if, uh, they're there yet, but they seem to be having or about to have testing kits that you. testing kits that you can use right in your workplace and you'll get the results pretty quick. And I would like to see us follow those so that when they are available, we get them. Because e- even though you're, the, 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 the temperature is an indicator, you can have a temperature for some other reason. And we need to take a look at what the coming technology is so that we can be sure. And if we have some of those testing kits when they become available, because I don't think this is going away soon. It would maybe able to just help us protect our staff more. And a perfect example is look at the White House. Who would have thought they would have had it in the White House? They're just number one safety. And yet they all of a sudden ended up testing people the next day. They were, they were negative, uh, positive one day, I mean, negative and the next day they were positive.
Plus they're all standing too.
Yeah, and, and I think we need to follow this so that when they are available, because I'm not sure if they are, but they are coming. We can, you know, do our own testing with our staff to be even more safe.
Uh, one quick thing, Homer just, uh, messaged me that we received, uh, um, um, an outreach from one of our vendors that does camera stuff and that they have a camera that can actually read temperature. Um, and so we'll look into that option too and as well as a, a service provider and report back when we get a little closer to that. With regard to the rest of the, the rest of our offices, we have fairly good, uh, separation in those areas. And so we're able to more kind of directly control, um, that area. But, um, I'm interested in, uh, mayor, you, you touched on it for a moment, but could you go back to the code enforcement, some direction there?
Well, um, uh, everything that we do for this COVID, we keep our, um, receipts or, or invoices so we can get reimbursed through FEMA. I think it's seventy-five percent or more as we move forward. And, uh, if you have a code enforcement, an additional code enforcement that can go out and investigate the complaints specifically for the, uh, COVID violations or the, uh, uh, violations of, of businesses, uh, during this, uh, phase one, two, two and a half, and then, uh, the, uh, phase three. Um, our code enforcement are s- uh, slowly behind in a lot of their, um, uh, sightings or, or jobs. And we've been, uh, neglectful for the beautification of this city. Uh, I'm, I'm, uh, appalled on chancellor. I'm appalled on, um, is it, uh, Squire Wells with that one house? And then you have other houses throughout and we're not doing the code enforcement on. You have, uh, people dumping loads of trash and, and, uh, yard clippings in the streets. And, and we should be doing that, one portion of the code enforcement. But at the same time, have an additional code enforcement to, um, concentrate on making sure when we do to go to stage three, that the hairdressers, um, uh, others, uh, are following the guidelines that are set forth by the state or by the, uh, good to go Stanislaus. So, or two, you know, you, you have, um, that seventy-five percent you get to, you're paying for fifty percent of a, of a code enforcement in the long run. You have to put upfront costs, but, and, uh, you get reimbursed. At least that's what the CARES Act was about. Do I make sense or not?
Yeah, uh, a- any other general thoughts on, unless I hear otherwise from the council? We'll, we'll be, we'll focus more of our attention on some of the more normal, um, code enforcement things that have been, uh, not as high a priority as, uh, they were previously because of some of the COVID enforcement we've done. But I want to be sure that if, that the council doesn't have an issue with us, uh, on a complaint basis, following up on state violations of the state order.
Vice Mayor Uribe here, so let me give you a couple of my thoughts, um. Uh, for the code enforcement, I do like that idea, uh, because I do feel like we're going to have maybe more non-compliant businesses. So having that backup, uh, specifically for that. And then when there is no calls, they could help with that backlog. So I do like that idea. Um, for the City Hall South, uh, watching the door, does it have to be code enforcement or could it be a part-timer, like a part-time staff?
No, it could be a part-time staff, but depending on how extensive we want to get and, or I'd just say maybe how much authority we want them to have, you know, they may be more, uh, the public may be more apt to listen to somebody in a uniform versus a part-time person standing at the door.
Okay. Because I, because I do like, uh, what Cindy, uh, council member Fossey was saying, if there was some shade out there for the residents, that maybe, maybe the part-timer could be under that shade as well. Kind of just doing the one in, one out, just like we're doing, uh, what we were doing at Winko, but now we're not doing it anymore. Um, as far as for the health provider, um, the, the only issue I, I have is it's sixty percent of the COVID nineteen cases show no symptoms. So there's no fever, there's, and that's more than half, that's the majority. There's no fever, there's nothing. Um, so maybe that, maybe the solution would be, you know, off, you know, getting in the info to all the, the three testing sites in the county. And then, uh, for City Hall South, since that's the issue, you know, uh, wearing a face covering, um, would help out until, like council member Campbell said, until more of the tests are available and where, where we can do it in-house. Um, as far as for the small businesses, uh, I think we do need to provide more opportunities for the small businesses, like, uh, relaxing the sidewalk sales rules, uh, to maximize, uh, maximize outdoor space and making sure that they're keeping that five, uh, foot path of travel. Um, yeah, those are my thoughts for now.
This is council member Darlene Barbara Martinez. Uh, my concern is when you look at the number of tests that have been completed in our county. I mean, we're not even, we're, we're like maybe one percent of the number of residents that we have in our county. And I'm just concerned that, you know, we're not doing enough testing. And the more testing that we do, the more positive cases I'm sure will come out. And it just seems to me that, um, you know, we're making plans, but I just think that we ought to be cautious in whatever it is that we plan on doing because of the, the tests that have not been done yet.
Darling, you're absolutely correct. You know, um, Keys had about a hundred tests assigned and eighteen showed up. Um, uh, council member or vice mayor, you were at, uh, Salida. And I bet you had zero wait time because people aren't showing up.
I was actually at the Keys one.
Oh, the Keys one, so was I. I, you must have beat me there because I was the second one.
I was the first one there.
And I was the second and there was nobody there. And you know why? Because they, they don't want to get, they don't need to be tested, they think. Um, uh, but, but here's the thing, Darlene. The people who are getting tested, uh, with the exception of me, have symptoms. And so of those, uh, or ten, or one percent, they were deemed to be at risk of having the COVID nineteen. And they showed up very little having it. Now, does that mean not, uh, that everybody should be tested? I think everyone should be tested. But I think we should have a statistical testing, and I'm pushing with that for, uh, with Dr. V and with the county, to have a statistical analysis of at least twenty-five hundred, uh, random people outside of the healthcare. So we can get a clear picture of who had, that if percentage that has it. And also at an additional statistical analysis of another twenty-five hundred, uh, that, uh, for the antibodies. Antibodies are giving you an eighty-five to ninety percent surety. But still, that's something that, that we should be doing as the county. And if we're not going to be doing it, then, um, countywide, then it, we're not going to gain the knowledge that I think you're looking for. Um, you're right, people who have it, have, have symptoms are being tested when everyone should be tested.
And, and I'd just like to point out something for all the residents watching. Uh, all the decisions we're making, like all the data points we're, we're looking at is based off just numbers tested. And we are under-tested by far in this county, we're under two percent. Uh, so it's, it's, so it's, it's hard to look at the data a- and make these, and make these tough decisions, knowing that, that the data may, may be wrong. I, I think we're under-tested, I, I think there are more cases, uh, of positives of deaths that are not being reported. So just a perspective for the residents watching.
And, uh, I'll go with it, I agree with you on that. But I also will say that the residents who sign up for the testing are not taking advantage of it, which is, uh, a shame.
Yeah.
Because they're wasting resources. And I also think that we should be testing every of the, uh, congregate living areas. And I pushed for that long before Turlock became positive. Had we tested then, we may have had fewer deaths, probably not fewer positives, but fewer, fewer deaths. And I would like to see, of course, I can't force them, but the healthcare to test the one on Topeka, where that is a open, very open, hard to isolate patients. Um, and people that were working in Turlock were working in Riverbank. People who tested positive in Turlock worked in Riverbank. So do we have a problem or is it going to be all of a sudden we become the, uh, uh, the spike in the system? Or we become the, the nucleus for the next outbreak? So, and we can't force them to do it because they're under state laws.
Right, and so if we look at the number of tests that we should be doing, like per day, which I think is like maybe around eight hundred and fifty tests. And the highest we've had in the county is like around maybe, maybe three forty-five, three forty-something. So, but we'll never, for right now, seems like we'll never be able to reach that goal of getting to eight hundred and fifty tests, uh, per day.
So supervisor, I actually asked supervisor Olson this question. She says we're actually going to be meeting that, that metric or we are meeting that metric. Uh, where the, where the data is, I haven't seen it yet. Uh, but I did stress to her, um, as far as like the next location of testing sites should be on the east side. Uh, and, and it should be near a nursing facility or group home, so, um, I'm still waiting to see that data, so, but I haven't seen it yet.
Okay. And what about adequate P P E? Do we know if there is adequate P P E in all of our skilled nursing facilities in the county?
Uh, there is not and there, there's a shortage of gowns throughout California. And so, um, and Stanislaus will never meet that metric as long as the state does not provide it. Now for other P P E, uh, I've asked the county and they're doing it, uh, to come up with adequate P P E. Not only for nursing facilities or others, but for, uh, businesses that are open and are planning to open, especially hand sanitizer, mask or face shields, depending on what you want. But, um, you know, it's, it's their desire to, to achieve. Um, right now, um, I'm on a, a meeting every day with the county, Dr. V, uh, O E S. I'm on a meeting every day with the state. I'm on a, a meeting weekly with the U S Conference of Mayors. In fact, uh, if you want to join the conference of mayors just to listen in, I'd be happy to, uh, give you those, those information. A lot of the funding that they're putting on out there, if you can't use it for exactly what you need, use it for housing. That was what Ben Carson said last week. There's others that, uh, the, uh, surgeon general was on explaining, uh, a lot more in detail than you get from this state government. Although, you know, there's conflicts between medical professionals, but the surgeon general, I think, has a pretty good weight. Um, and there's a disagreement between, and a disagreement between our, uh, healthcare officer and the state. And she's in, in agreement with the fedos more than they, she is with the state. Um, it just seems like whoever has the opinion, you're going to have, um, a, a severe disagreement. So P P E and how it's going to be used and what have you. But the, the criteria, Sean, can you go back to some of your slides? The criteria that, that we were at first given was, do you have enough surge capability? We have three hundred and thirty-three beds that we've never used, that's our surge capability. Do you have enough capability to, for ventilators? We have never been severely shorted, I mean, not even close. Uh, we've always had above forty percent availability and now I think it's at seventy percent availability of, um, uh, ventilators. The ICU dedicated for, um, COVID have never really diminished. So those were the criteria and then it was shifted. It shifted again, you know, last week, uh, what was it? You, you couldn't have dog grimy. Then at the end of last week, you could, then Monday you couldn't have it, but today it's authorized. So everything is shifting, but it makes no sense. So, uh, Sean, do you have, uh, the, the, um, ventilators, hospital beds?
Yeah, uh, Annabelle, if you go to, um, I think it's like three slides down from there.
Okay, right there. Here, we'll go back one, please, Annabelle. Okay, hospital bed availability and five-day averages. Okay, the number you see up there are hospitalized positive COVID nineteen, I mean, and you see that we're slowly going down. We're not going to get to zero, we're not going to get to zero until next year. So you take a look at the total beds, there's fifty-three percent availability. Okay, that's going to break the hospital because they want ninety percent. Hello? See the ICU beds available for the COVID nineteen, we have forty-six percent available. But the ventilators, the major thing is at seventy-one percent. So for the ICU and the total beds, if you go to the surge capability of three hundred and thirty-three more beds, we have exceeded all expectations that the state wanted. So now they're putting on additional requirement. So P P E, we do not have a month's supply, Darlene. We do have a couple of weeks' supply. And if you use, uh, Mission or some of the other laundry services, they can get those and do a turnaround. You can get a lot of those turnarounds in twenty-four to forty-eight hours sanitized and in, in, um, uh, sanitized packaging. So we, we are meeting and are downward, we have a downward trend. The only unfortunate thing is that we have Turlock. And I have mentioned that leadership style to the mayor of Turlock a couple of times, but I, she didn't like it. Those numbers are actually pretty dang good, but we keep having deaths and that's from the Turlock. So is there a way there lawyer that we could get, uh, make the county test our care facilities? Tom?
I think yesterday when the president spoke, I thought he said that he wanted that done. So I'm sure we have the backing of the president, let's just get the kits.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, um, I don't believe we can make the county do that, no.
Can can we make the care home do it?
Pardon?
Can we make, uh, Topeka, um, uh, care facility, rehabilitation, uh, facility do it?
I think our best option is actually to talk to the state about it. I think that's, that this is one of those cases where we would, uh. Try to get the state to cooperate with us, and I think that's something that they might be interested in. Uh. I frankly, frankly, I think that's the best option.
We could follow, we could follow up on that, but.
Yeah, please do. They've been unresponsive even to the, uh, um, higher facility, um. Uh, ups than, you know, like the senators and the assembly members, they've they've ignored everyone and said. We know what we're doing. You have to follow suit, so. I don't know who you're gonna go talk to to have them do it, Sean.
Well, I I'll I'll, uh, provide council some email updates, uh, this week. I'll I'll make that a priority. I'll also just, you know, the other question, it might just even be easier is just to call the the facility on Topeka and have a discussion with the manager over there and see what they're doing, if anything.
Please do, because, uh, Dr. V was so confident about their protocol. Throughout the state, they have to follow these certain regulations. When there was an outbreak in Turlock, it was. Oops, and I'm sorry, oops is not good enough.
Yeah, yeah, we'll we'll make that a a top priority. And then I, the other thing that there you mentioned about. Um, outdoor dining, but a- also Councilman Rebey mentioned about, um. Uh, sidewalk bending. If council's generally positive about that, I I think that's a really easy thing for us to do, to just sort of relax some of those general restrictions on places. Find new creative ways to do business that might, you know, need less people inside combined spaces.
And and then the. What we wanna do is avoid, um, closures like, uh, designed by Karen closing down forever.
Yeah.
And and we we need to keep our businesses, uh, open. I don't know what's going to happen after June, if we're, it's still in the same state. Because there is no, um, lifeline after that.
What we'll do is we'll take all that feedback that you gave on on not only the city opening. Uh, the detail with regard to kind of preventative measures, but also these other bits and pieces and, uh, pr- get it. The stuff that we can do immediately, checking on the nursing home, uh, working on some of these preventative measures, we'll put it in place immediately. The stuff you need to be reported back to on, we'll do so at the next meeting.
I have a question. Are the businesses being asked to give us a plan of action or a plan of how they want to reopen yet?
Uh, I think that we talked about that a little bit today. It's not a requirement. Um, but if you look at that ready to go Stanislaus, um, document, a lot of the guidance that's given. Kind of, it's, I was really impressed. I mean, in fact, the CEO said today that they've actually worked with the businesses that are in these different sectors. Brainstormed ideas about what things they can do to change how they do business to create a little safer environment. So, um, I I actually was just, um, communicating with our local business, uh, this afternoon, and. I think what we're going to, what we're going to do is just use our best judgment in those. There's always businesses that don't really fall into one category or another. And in those cases, I think what we're going to do is just require that they at least articulate to us that they have a plan and what that is. And most reasonable people, I think, can review those and and, you know, pick out the things that make sense and those that don't, so. Um, I but I do suspect this, Councilman Berenjatino, is that once we move into the next phase where you have some of the more risky businesses. Um, you know, possibly being able to open like gyms, for example. They they are going to have to provide some detail about how they intend to do things differently.
Thank you.
And Council, it it is the California Department of Public Health.
Okay, thank you on that, Tom. And Darlene, um, if you haven't seen Good to Go Stanislaus. Sean, can you, uh, send that out to everyone everyone? I I'd appreciate, it is detailed. I, um. In my gentle manner that I always am, I tore it apart. And 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 we had some very good changes to it. Um, uh, one of the things, for example, they want to have a 15-foot separation instead of a six-foot. Uh, because someone saw from the CDC that when you cough, it can travel 12 feet. So we're now putting 15. Okay, so that is ac- actually, the 12 feet would have been, six would have been 124, 225 square feet. So you have, uh, uh, Home Depot. Uh, that has a, uh, 100,000 square foot footprint for retail. Comes out to where 400 people could be in that building, customers. And I think that's a little bit, um. Uh, that that's not a good idea. Because 400 people. Luis, you know this, retail, they all come up at the same time. They all hover around the meat department. Then they go up to the check stand and all check out at the same time.
Yeah.
So that is, um, that's a joke for the retail business. But, you know, that's gonna happen. But if you have this 250 square foot. You have somebody going into the boutique store, um, on Third Street. You can't have an employee and a customer in the same building because you exceeded that that space difference. So you have to be very judicious on how you execute. But I I thought, um. That the Good to Go Stanislaus had a more reasonable approach. I just don't like closing down, um, uh, break rooms like they suggested. I I hope they they change those. Or have it only one person in the break room at a time. Maintain your social distancing, and I think, uh, we could go a a lot further. The difference between here and 1918 is. We know the differences on on how to control it, like hand washing. Um, when you get home, you take off your clothes and you you get into something that has not been possibly contaminated. Keep washing, showering more, um. I it's it's gonna be, we're gonna get through this, and we're gonna do it, as they say, together. Um. Sean, somebody changed that. It was, uh, April date on that. 6.1. Now it's May. You guys did that. You guys sneaked it by me.
I just wanted to make sure the public knew it was May 12th today.
Thank you very much. I was looking at April. I wanted to say something publicly, but when you changed it, I'd had to say something publicly.
I'm I'm trying to get the hang of it. Thank you.
Mayor, just so that it doesn't go unsaid, um, and even though, um. To those members of the public that wanna make a comment, they need to send them to Annabelle Aguilar, uh, excuse me. They need to send them to the city clerk email address, uh, so that we can make sure that they're received by council. Uh, Evelyn, um, has sent me an email to, uh, comment that if. There was testing station here, they could also do the employees. There's no transportation to the other side. That's another issue, and and she's generally correct. It it is more difficult for people that have. You know, the limited ability to get around to, um, transport themselves to some of these places. But I know that they have availability.
Evelyn, thank you very much. However, the state dictated where they were going to be. It was, uh, the, uh, the Slida one is where the county chose. The the Keys, and Patterson is where the state chose. We wanted one either in Oakdale or Riverbank for the east side. Um, and, um. We don't get input on that. Um. However, if you call your state senator, who is Galgiani. And I can give you her phone number, or your assembly member, which is Flora. I can give you his phone number. You could ask for it to be in Riverbank, and I would appreciate having one right downtown at the community center. Uh, we're not using it right now, so we might as well use it for testing and of all of Riverbank to see exactly where we are.
I need to make a comment for clarification on something that the governor did said last week. He's hiring 20,000 new employees and training them. And what I'm having trouble with is seeing how. How we can plug that in to help us in Riverbank, or how's it gonna help us in the county?
Very easy, Cal. Um, this is in the contact tracing.
Right.
If somebody in Riverbank has come up positive. They go to, uh, the individual who's who, uh, has the COVID-19. And most people have some type of iPhone. And they'll take your iPhone and see where you have been. Your phones talk to other phones. So your tracing is a lot more easy with. Uh, my iPhone, I came in contact with somebody earlier today, knows exactly who I came in contact with. So they'll know exactly how far away I am. Um, so it's it's big brother industry. Of course, it will only be used, um, uh, with the HIPAA laws, I doubt it. Uh, but what they'll do is is they'll trace you from there, plus. Uh, call the people that you have, uh, come in contact with. See if they came in contact with someone else that their phone did not capture. And that's where he's getting the 20,000. Here we are supposed to have. I wanna say 700. Sean, how many are we supposed to add? Were you on the phone call yesterday?
845.
Oh, 845 contact tracers. And they're gonna be tracing all of your, if you came in contact with someone.
No, no, I don't. It's not 845. Uh, it it was the first number, closer to the first number, but they have, um. In fact, the county has moved, uh, when I initially started, uh, subbing in at the EOC, the liaison there, they. Took me the room, and it was basically a room, I would say maybe with 20 or 30 people in there. That were working on contact tracing and trying to make sure they're following up on new cases. They then subsequently moved that group to Salida, I believe, the library there. And then just, uh, today, I think they're going to be moving that group again to August Hall. Um, uh, down South Modesto. So there are, does sound like they are expanding their contact tracing.
And I think we're supposed to have 750, uh, to get out of Phase 1 and start transitioning through Phase 2.
Okay, thank you.
So that 20,000 count, they may be permanent. They may be tracking us for the rest of your life.
Luis needs to worry about that, not me. I think the number was one in every, one per 10,000 residents, I believe it was. I think I did the math. It was somewhere around 100 contact tracers. And now this iPhone tracking thing, was this on a on a state call? Cause I haven't seen this info yet.
It is how they how they do the tracing. If somebody comes and comes, the way they're doing it, Luis, is through. Uh, with the STD and some of the others. How, who did you come in contact with, not only sexually, but who have you been in contact with? And they use it through the iPhone. Now, in certain states, you can opt out of it by getting an app.
Yeah, I did the, I did the state training, the the training that they just put out. I I actually did it. And it wasn't in there, so I was just curious. If you guys could send me that, uh, that link, I would like to, I would just like to check it out.
I think I remember hearing the governor say that, and this is some of the the, uh, tracing that they've been doing for years, for instance, for TB. For flu, for the pandemics that we've had with the flu. This is something that they've been doing for years and years and years. This is nothing new.
You're correct. All right. Um, wait a minute, I have to read my script. Annabelle, have we received any calls or written comments?
Other than Evelyn's comment, we have not received other written emails or any phone calls.
Well, thank you. Okay, um. Is staff, um, comfortable with our discussion?
Yeah, I I think we have, uh, enough direction. Um, and we'll, uh, package this all together in a neat package for next meeting, but in the meantime, we have enough to move forward on our end.
Is there anything additional that some council member wants to, uh, address before we move forward?
I just wanna share a bit of information I picked up today listening to the county meeting. Uh, last Thursday, and Kristen Olson said this, 158 counties. I mean, pardon me, 58 counties spoke to the government's office about changing the metrics to be more reasonable. They got together as a group, I guess, did it somehow or another. But she made that comment today, and I think that's good because I think the government needs to look at, the governor needs to look at changing the metrics for some of the counties. Because one size doesn't fit all, and we're a perfect example. He is loosening up because he is, I think, down in Kern County and some of the northern counties, he's starting to let them go because they've got very little. Right now, you know, as far as, uh, sta- stats go with the the, uh, COVID virus in their county, and he's letting them open up more. Uh, so he said so today when I saw him, I watched him at lunchtime.
Um, I was unable to to watch him, but I think yesterday was very telling when Elon Musk said, hell no. And opened up. And when he did that, I think the governor got the the indication that he's a little bit more restrictive than. Than maybe necessary, although that's up to him. If if one size fits all. LA County will never open up.
Right.
And he cannot allow that to happen. So. With concurrence, since I don't think we have any motion to make, is for concurrence, do we have concurrence to move on to item 6.2?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Anybody else?
Yes, but I have one more comment to make.
Karen, make it quick, the comment.
Okay, sorry. Um, I just feel like, uh, the, um, restaurants. That everyone in the restaurant who is preparing food and serving food should be wearing a face covering. That's my personal opinion. That's all I have to say. After that, I am concurrence with moving ahead.
Uh, Darlene, if you read, uh, Stanislaus, uh, the Good to Go Stanislaus. It has the same recommendation. It has a recommendation also that they wear gloves. And then also has a recommendation that they have disposable menus. That is, the menu you receive has not been touched by human hands. Once you're done with it, it is disposable.
Very good. Thank you.
So, uh, and Sean, you did send it out, right? Okay, good. Thank you.
And and for anybody else, uh, watching or listening, if you're interested in, uh, accessing the document. It's available at the Stan Emergency website, and if you just scroll halfway down the page on the COVID page, it says Good to Go Stanislaus, and just click it, and it will take you there.
Boy, I thought 2020 was gonna be a good year. Okay, let's move on to item 6.2. For item 6.2, at this time, public comments on item 6.2 may be sent during the next five minutes. Or more until we're done with the report, be emailed to cityclerk@riverbank.org. Or by calling 209-863-7172. Item 6.2, COVID-19, parks, recreations, and events.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Sue is on the line with. Thank you, Mayor. Um, Sue is on the line with us tonight and um, she is going to uh, give this report. Before we get started, there's a couple of components that I think I want to just make council aware of. And also to make this item a little easier, because there's a lot we're gonna ask for direction on. Firstly, the way I think it might be easiest is she can, she'll step through slide by slide, and each slide kind of has a portion of recreational parks that they're looking to be directed. And what I think she would do is pause, give you the opportunity to kind of give that feedback and then we move on. Because we're talking, I mean, this is a, a broad item because frankly, there's a lot that we need to have uh, some direction. Secondly, um, uh, one question that's come up with regard to uh, public facilities and uh, recreation facilities is this question of liability and this question of um, what our exposure may be if we were to receive a claim, you know, saying such, you know, John Q. Public uh, transmitted COVID-19 at your uh, Jacob Myers Park event. And um, you know, we're suing the city because you, you know, for whatever reason. Um, is, is that a, a covered claim? Meaning would our insurance carriers step in and defend the city? Uh, and would we have access to liability if we were to have a judgment uh, on something like that? I mean, uh, city attorney's office actually has submitted a letter to our insurance carrier requesting clarification on that. Uh, as of, at least today, we have not received a response back. So it's clear um, at this point, well, you know, what uh, protection we will or will not have as a result of this kind of thing. And I know the council, you know, you can't make lots of decisions a year and not every decision you make can be based on, on the most conservative risk, uh, you know, exposure. But um, in this particular instance, I think the discussion really needs to revolve around what reasonable restrictions can we put in place so that we can limit our risk to the greatest extent possible. Sue has some great ideas along those lines, so I'm gonna pass it over to her.
Okay. Mayor, members of the council, um, as Sean mentioned, I kind of set up the PowerPoint to kind of go from easiest decisions to more difficult, I think. Um, so we'll kind of go ahead and go through that. We have been building a lot of, a lot of calls in parks and rec. People want to get back outside. A lot of the youth sport groups want to know when they can start their programs up. So we're hoping to get, a lot of people are waiting for, for the answers tonight, so. Um, next slide, Annabelle. Okay, so currently, we have pretty much everything in parks and rec has been shut down since mid to late March. So that would be our playgrounds, our tennis, pickleball, basketball courts, the Riverbank Skate Park, Jacob Myers Park, including the dog park and trail, the community pool. Next slide. The sports complex, uh, so the soccer league uh, is on hold. Castleburg Park baseball fields, so Riverbank Youth Baseball is on hold. Community Center on all programs, Scout Hall on all programs, park restrooms. And we have not taken any park reservations and facility reservations, and we, we canceled all of those that were, were scheduled in our facilities or in our parks. So tonight, we're hoping to get some approval to open up some park amenities. Um, and the first group, and this will be the first request for approval that we're asking council to consider tonight, is beginning Thursday, May 14th, with, with the exception of Jacob Myers Park, because we'll talk about that separately, uh, to open the playgrounds, all the courts, tennis, pickleball, basketball, the park restrooms, the Riverbank Skate Park. And in reopening those, we would follow the guidelines set forth in the latest CDC protocols for phase one entering into phase two. And we also place signage on the next slide that would have maintain social distancing, uh, wash hands, wearing a mask is recommended, no large gatherings or group play, use of public facilities is at your own risk due to COVID-19. And I'm not sure if the city attorney or anyone has any other wording for the signage. Those are just some that we, we uh, know go with the order and that we will put on all of our, all of our amenities that we would open. So that's the first group. Annabelle, if you want to go back to the next, the, the slide before, um, that lists the parks we are, or the amenities we are asking for approval to reopen on May 14th.
Vice Mayor Uribe here. Um, in phase two, it says uh, playgrounds and picnic areas not permitted. So I wouldn't be comfortable opening up playgrounds. As far as the tennis, pickleball, and basketball courts, I would be okay with that. Uh, park restrooms may be porta potties. If, if, I don't know if anybody uh, would be open to that. And then Riverbank Skate Park, I, I, I I, I'm, I'm still leaning towards keeping that one closed, just, just for the safety. What's on my mind is what's going on with New York and all the, all the case, all the new uh, the new cases of uh, inflammation that's happening to the kids over there, so I'm kind of hesitant on the skate parks still.
My, my opinion is playground, according to Dr. V, the only risk of transmission is if parents don't control the kids playing closely with other children outside of their little isolation bubble. Um, you can't get off the, the um, um, the steel or, or, or the uh, the equipment itself, but you can get while you're playing with another kid you don't know from another family. The opposite is for the tennis, pickleball, and basketball. According to Dr. V, is that you hold the ball in your hand and you have COVID-19, you hit it, it doesn't shake off. And then you have to pick up the ball, you can be transmitted. And I'm not one to wear gloves playing tennis. I am pickleball because I know what pickleball does. I'm sorry, Cal. But basketball, the same thing. It's a big ball with larger surface area that can transmit um, the COVID-19 virus from one person to another through a pass. For park restrooms, or from whatever you have, whether it's a porta potty or a park restroom, you say, hey, at your own risk, um, please bring your own sanitation or disinfectant, whether it be a wipe or whatever. Uh, for the skate park, what are we gonna do? We have signs up, it's closed, and you have five to 10 skaters there at almost any time. Um, and that's a relief for the younger kids. If they're not running into other, if they're not, uh, you know, we have to take a risk sometime. They, they're taking the risk being out there. If you have a porta potty and I, I'm sick and I used it, there's no sanitation until the uh, whatever time you sanitize, someone else uses it. You know, we're infecting them. So it's a risk factor you have to clearly state and hopefully everyone can read. Um, I'm gonna go back to all courts. I, I think it's a risk that we, we announced to everyone saying that it'd be transmitted, it is your risk, take proper precautions, and then use hand sanitizer before you touch your face. You know, I'm old and I, I, I'm very susceptible if I get this thing, that I won't be here next year uh, or next week. Uh, and I would surely hate to die because I touched my nose. And same thing with, uh, we're sure everyone knows that as they're going out there um, in any of these other places. So my opinion is almost opposite of Luis, not that I'm, the contrary. It's, it's responsibility. Are we going to let people not use our, our parks? In my opinion, and it always is my opinion, that our parks are a reflection of our quality of life. If we restrict that and they have the capability of using it, then we're doing a disservice. And Sue, I also have a question for you. Why is Silver Park Gras dying? We'll, we'll, we'll talk about that later.
Okay.
So that's, that's my opinion.
I have a council member, Caroline Barbara Martinez. I have a question about the signs that we want to put up. Are we gonna put those up in Spanish also? Or just English?
Both.
Thank you.
I have some comments. I'm uh, I'm, this is council member Fossey. I'm with uh, the mayor. I, I think parents understand with the playgrounds. Um, I'd like to see if maybe we can put um, the foamy hand sanitizer out there. I don't know how likely that is to last very long, but maybe we can put that out there for them to use. Um, and then the signs need to say, you know, use it at your own risk. Of course, same thing. I mean, people have to understand that if they touch something, just like if they go to the store and they touch something and they take it out of the store, they have to wash their hands before they touch the wheel of their car. Park restrooms, are the ones at the parks single ones except for Jacob Myers?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Castleburg, no. Some of them, some of them, yes, some of them, no. Sports Complex, no. Castleburg, no. Most of the parks are the single ones.
Then again, signage and Riverbank State Park, uh, we've got a lot in there. I mean, these kids have, get their question out.
One thing real quick about the restrooms is, one thing about our park restrooms, they are sanitized daily. Where I know we, when we closed our park restrooms a few weeks back, or however long ago it was, we brought in the two portable restrooms, one at Pioneer, we placed one there and we placed one across from City Hall South. They aren't sanitized like the mayor mentioned, like our own restrooms are, so. It's so much harder to have our park restrooms open.
I would much rather have our park restrooms other open than use porta potties. I think they're cleaner, I think they're safer. Um, so I'm, I'm all for going ahead with May 14th.
If our, if our park restrooms are cleaner than the porta potties, then, then I'll change, then obviously we'll go that route as well. And then just a follow-up question. So if the state is not permitting uh, playgrounds and picnic areas, aren't we liable in that regard?
Tom, um, can you speak to that a little bit? Because um, I spoke with Doug White uh, today about it, and generally the response I got was that cities can make that decision. Um, you know, certainly we wouldn't want to do anything that puts us in a deeper hole.
Well, ob- obviously if something happens, you know, everybody will be named, and we would be at the top of the list. The question of liability, you know, this is a, this is a, obviously unprecedented times that we're in. And you really don't know which way people are going to go after the fact, the jury. Are they gonna say, oh my God, it's completely unfair to hold municipalities liable for these things? And, you know, we all pay for that? Or is it going to be an attitude of, yeah, we wanted, you know, we all wanted to do this, but you should have told us that we, we couldn't? I mean, it's just, it's just a big unanswered question on uh, liability ultimately. It's, as we said, it's a, we don't live, you know, there's really the biggest risk ever, um, you know, and we don't want to, you know, live as much as possible and understand that, you know, you are, everybody wants to, you know, let's get through this as fast as we can. The liability question is just, you know, I, I hate to give an answer like this, but it's just the biggest unanswered question I have.
I, I don't think playgrounds were taken off the list or are said that you can't do it in phase, for transition, transition to phase two. Um, I'll have to go take a look at what they, what they, uh,
Yeah, if you guys go to the california.gov, the California Department of Public Health, the specific states, uh, the resilient program, the most counties that are, that can go into further phase two, and including state shares, community centers, including public pools, playgrounds, picnic areas are not permitted in phase two. So that's, that was, that's why I'm.
I'm not doing, I'm not doing picnic areas.
Uh, That, that's, that's why I wouldn't become more opening up the playground.
The playgrounds we're talking about are the swings, the slides, things that the COVID cannot exist on for more than seconds. Especially when they're hot. Heck, kids can't even fly down the slide when it's hot. Um,
It's not necessarily, it's not necessarily that, that it's, that it's living on the equipment, it's that the kids are gonna be interacting and.
And then that is something that we have to put on those who are supervising.
Exactly. We, we can't control the parents or the kids.
Well, and, and you know, to everybody's kind of comments, we have to also recognize that this is just super. Um, uh, I believe that really playgrounds and a couple of other recreational facilities, then we'll be later. So certainly we wouldn't want to be in a, more recommending anything that was directly in opposition, um, you know, of, of the order. Um, but one of the questions that, that I, looks like we may need to get answered is that if we were to open them with the modifications that have been suggested, is it still safe? Uh, you know, recommendation of the state, and I just don't know the answer. I could tell you that I know that at least a couple other local communities have, have opened.
Can you repeat that, Sean? You were cutting out.
Sorry. Uh, yeah, I was, I was gonna say, one of the things that we may need to follow up on for council is whether if we would, if we would be generally compliant with the state order if we opened these facilities with the modification that's signed.
If, if I could do, there's one, this is not an instance where uh, putting a, you assume the risk on a sign, that doesn't mean that's a liability. The only sign that works is the modification, like the park. But just to say you assume the risk, uh, by putting your ticket to the park, that it gets off the hook.
Yeah, sure, it doesn't take us off the hook, uh, but there is a certain responsibilities that have to be maintained. And as it's being taken off the hook, the only thing I don't want to do is open any facility that they, they will say, you've just lost all of your exemptions, you're gonna be liable for everything. So that's, that's what we should be doing as we're looking forward. And go forward to, I, I, I don't envy your position, but I support opening up as much as you possibly can. But that's my opinion, and uh, it's going to be for the, the mental health of our residents.
Right. Some families are not in a good spot. They need to get out. And that's, that's part of what we're hearing, you know, with the phone calls and, and people reaching out to us is they just need to get out. And we know the safety thing is, is a, a big concern, but it's that mental health as well.
Right. I think, I think we're good to move forward as long as Sean and Tom double check to make sure that the playgrounds are something that we can't open without any liability. I, I think the others are good. I think we just need to get clarification before we go forward with the playgrounds.
And back to something I think Sean started with, is it would be nice if we could get a letter from our risk management authority saying what they would cover. Then we, then it's, well, whatever the liability, however that's resolved or covered.
And council member Fossey mentioned uh, hand sanitizing stations. What about uh, the hand washing stations? Would that be at a cheaper cost if we had those around somewhere?
We were unable to get those when we rented the porta potties. They were completely out. So I don't know, we could try again, but I don't know if they're available at all.
Yeah, I I think um, council member Fossey, that idea that you had makes a lot of sense because it sounds like based on, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Reade is sharing, the big issue seems to be in particular playgrounds.
Right, right.
And we can, uh, city attorney's office and I can work on that. We'll make sure that we're not making any changes that we think are.
And I think the um, hand washing stations would be a lot more than putting up the sanitizer foam. Um, the problem will be Sue, if you can even get them.
Right, right.
Probably will be people not stealing them or vandalizing them, too.
Well, yeah, that too. But kids like to play with that, so at least you know the kids would be using them because they do like to get that, the foam.
Right, I I spoke with a vetis yesterday and they are the ones who are making the hand sanitizer that Gallo is claiming is theirs. And they would be willing to donate as much as we need in the bottles that they have, if we can find some way to keep them secure so they can be used. Darlene is faded out. Campbell, you're almost dark. Turn on a light.
Light. Better one. Uh, I agree with you, mayor, about the risk factor. And I did a little bit of research, uh, because I was concerned about the sweat, you know, on the basketball court and some of the other. Sweat itself will not carry the virus.
No.
But the only problem is, if somebody has an allergy or a sinus problem, if they wipe their, say, face or whatnot and get the sweat in it and then drop the sweat on it, it can be transferred. But that's just the risk factor. I personally feel we need to take some steps and start opening up. Uh, I agree with about the mental health. I've talked to a lot of people and I think it's gonna get worse if we don't do things. And our percentage for like, the virus here in our community is very, very low, way down below one percent, even with the deaths. And we need to watch it and put some of the obligation upon the citizens. But we need to start coming out of this because we're letting something that's really quite small, darn us, more than, and and the majority doesn't seem to be getting to go very far. But I'm willing to take the risk because we gotta start taking the risk as long as we can find that we're not doing something illegally. Tom needs to look at it and Sean, and you know that we are obeying by the state so we don't upset them, as the mayor said, and lose something. But I think we gotta give it a try because we gotta take risks sometimes.
Because it is small, Cal, it is not something that we should just, I I know you're not doing that, but it just seemed like you're you're not having the emphasis it should retain. And we are looking at this very, very seriously as each individual and each uh, the people I talked to, seventy-six percent of California doesn't want to reopen at all.
Correct.
They want to, want to stay at home, um, order to stay. But then they want releases on their own terms. So what we have to do is do it for the good of the order, do it good, uh, for the good of the city. And uh, uh, most of those who said they that they don't want it opened were uh, pulled in LA. Well, heck, yeah, I don't even go drink the air uh, when it's uh, healthy. Um, or, you know, there's no COVID. But we, we need to take a look at the holistically, our city. Okay, so what what do we have for opening? Sue, what do you, what do you know what we've talked about on the reopening on this one page?
Okay, so playgrounds, it sounds like it's up in the air until we get a little more information. Uh, tennis, pickleball, basketball courts. How how are we on that one? Are we good to go on that one?
I think it was, I think it was to to open those with appropriate signage.
Yes.
Park restrooms to open, since they can be more sanitized than than the portables anyways, it's, they can open those. And then, um, the skate park, the skate park is a tricky one. I, but you know, to be honest with you, it's a tricky one from an enforcement perspective as well. Um, because, you know, short of, you know, filling the, filling the bowls with water, um, even that probably wouldn't stop them. Um, the kids have been using that area. And so it almost, any additional kind of preventative measures that that your staff, I know they do a lot already, but that we could do out there to make a little more save.
What's the fear? That they'll skate too close to each other or?
Well, let me see.
It's just a gathering.
Yeah, they hang out and don't do a lot of skating sometimes. They just hang out the corner.
But have you guys seen people just gather um, down at uh, someone else's house? Or in the neighborhood? I see them all the time, you know, fifteen, twenty people gathering. We could have them all arrested. But they just happen to be walking and talking and it just gets bigger and bigger. I mean, right down at Squire Wells, um, a block away from me, I saw about twelve people gathering, talking to their dogs and their poop bags. And then they separated afterward. We, social interaction has to happen. Um,
Right.
And then for young kids, uh, they are getting affected when you're years than ten uh, for some of those uh, really severe uh, symptoms of, of what is it? Uh, rashes. Uh, it it happens six to eight weeks after they may have been in contact with COVID nineteen. But I don't see that happening in a exercise area. Now, for tennis courts, I don't see that. Dr. V said tennis courts are okay if you keep it within a family unit. Same thing with pickleball, same thing with basketball. But in basketball, you're in close contact as you're going up uh, to uh, to uh, make a score and someone's trying to block you, you're going to have, you know, face to face contact from time to time unless you're Sean's height and you're Darlene height, they'll never have face to face contact. But, sorry, Darlene, Sean's just too tall. Um, but, you know, these are risks of of living. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm not minimizing the COVID nineteen and I'm not minimizing um, the the physical contact that will happen in a lot of our uh, activities. And so we have to balance it. I think right now, we're going to investigate playgrounds, all courts. Take a look at, I think we're gonna open the park restaurant, the restroom and let the skate park, you know, you could put the signage out and not have the the code enforcement or have the code enforcement. I don't know. I think the major ones that we really need to decide, Sue, is come, are coming up.
So what if, what if we just, what if we meet in the middle here? What if, because I, what if we limit it to a certain amount of ki- of kids that can be at the skate park?
Well, I I don't think that there's any problem in us putting that on the notice. Um, and, you know, we did generally have security sort of checking a couple of key areas that that Sue dictates that, you know, need more checking from security. If we could certainly add that, just understanding, having an understanding from council that that's very difficult for us to monitor and police all the time. But if it's gen- a generalized guideline, I feel like we probably have done our due diligence that, you know, it might get overrun. I don't see a major issue with that. Anybody else have brought that?
Not at all. Just make sure that we follow the guidelines of good to go standards.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
If we could, if we're ready to, um, if we could look at the following slide and and let me know. I know we would do the signage in Spanish and English, but is, is there anything different as far as the signage that I have on these slides that either the city attorney or or anybody else would like to be worded differently? And that would be on the next slide.
Can can we pull up that slide, please?
Sue, I would be very, um, strict, I would, I would be very uh, specific saying that COVID nineteen, um, is a deadly virus. When you use at your ri- your your, use um, at your wrist. I mean, it's, you have to be prescriptive in saying, in washing your hands twenty minutes, twenty seconds. Uh, use hand sanitizer if we make available. Hand sanitizer is something that, um, I'm trying to get the county to buy plenty of. So when every park you enter, every um, venue you enter, stores, that you use that hand sanitizer as you enter and use that hand sanitizer as you leave. Um, if they can do that, that, just having those little signs there, it has to be a warning sign, a danger, danger, Will Robinson type of a, uh.
Yeah, we can, we, I I don't, I think we can work with the city attorney's office, kind of touch this up a little bit. We'll have just general information and some more. But, you know, it'll be short enough so people will still take a look at it and read it. It'd be clear, so.
I think we need to specifically say, what is a large gathering? More than six people, no more than four, that type of thing? So that people are very speci- they understand specifically what we don't want twelve people there.
Right. They were using the no more than ten, is that where we are, do you think? Is it no more than ten people?
I think ten is good.
Yeah.
And I I want to suggest maintain uh, physical distancing and wearing a mask is highly recommended. I I think that if we use the word highly, that people understand that we really mean, um, put one on.
Yeah.
Yeah, highly or strongly recommended.
Yes.
Uh, a gathering above twelve is what the county and the state considers as being a larger ga- gathering. Um, in a restaurant, six at a table is permissible if they're in their family unit.
I can add family unit on there, too.
Yeah, family gathering case.
Yeah. Um, so large gatherings, um, you have to, it it varies. It could be twelve in my family, it could be a hundred and eighty, honestly. Uh, but, and and in a playground, you don't, you may not want more than six. But at Jacob Myers Park, we could spread it out to twelve. Um,
Uh, you know, maybe we just take a conservative approach and and we could amend depending on what we actually see out there. But but would anybody have a problem if we just limited it to ten?
I'm good with the ten.
Okay.
No, I'm fine with ten also.
Ten, yep.
Okay, uh, you, Sue, you want to move on to the next slide?
Yeah.
We're not even into the hard stuff.
I know, I I think I have what I need to to move forward on that. Okay, so Jacob Myers Park is uh, the big conversation we wanted to have because it is a beautiful park, people are wanting to go there. Uh, it has been closed. Uh, what we would like to propose is begin Saturday, May sixteenth, this Saturday, uh, to open Jacob Myers Park, including the dog park and the trail. Uh, but limit the number of people. And and really, my worry is Saturdays and Sundays. I'm not real worried about during the week, having a large gatherings. Uh, so, like I said, mainly thinking about Saturday and Sundays and holidays. Living at sixty car in the front and twenty in the back lot. Post a signage again and also close off the large pavilion so it's not tempting to have a large gathering there. Um, and follow the latest CDC protocols. Don't accept reservations for large gatherings. Don't let, allow people to plan their, they go through us, to plan their large family gatherings or or parties they have. Um, go to the next slide, too.
Sue, can you, can you address, just so council understands, the number of cars, you know, you're proposing as eighty, but a total capacity of the of the site?
Right, so in the front parking lot, there are a hundred and thirty-seven spaces. And in the back lot, there's, we could fit probably seventy-five. And on a busy weekend, we fill both lots. And people come and go to where we could have three hundred cars or four hundred cars a day or more. Um, and that's kind of how it goes. It depends on the weather, it depends on, you know, the the river level. Right now, it's low, so we're gonna attract more people than on years when the river le- level has been high and our attendance is definitely affected by that. So we we would be cutting it, the attendance down in half by allowing sixty in the front and by, you know, two thirds if we allowed twenty in the back. And people would come and go, so really more people would be able to have the park experience.
Sue, would you allow, would you allow walk-ins?
Well, Chief Ryden Howard and I talked about this. Um, what doesn't go well, and and Chief Kylie and I had found this out, um, a couple of years ago when we tried to stop walk-ins, doesn't go over well. People will down the embankment with their ice chest, they will come in anyway. And trying to stop them is not, not a good thing. So we talked about if the walk-ins came in, that's something we don't want to happen and we'll mention to them if our park is at capacity, sixty cars, and tell them because of the COVID nineteen virus, this is our protocol, we're hoping they're gonna be more understanding and turn around. If they don't, we'll know that this plan is not working and we have to just not open, letting car because it just causes a confrontational situation.
So that the, the people who walk in, for the most part, are parking up on the hill?
Yes.
Um, coming over the embankment, you mean they walk towards the wastewater treatment plant? Then come down?
Yeah, so a lot of them, if the parking lot is full and they park up there, it's because they can't get in because our parking lot is full. But other times, um, they have tried to avoid parking fee, but then the store owner and some of the neighbors started charging the parking fee and they'd have to pay anyway. So it was basically if our parking lot was full. But if, you know, we were throwing people away, they might park in there and walk away.
Can't wait to put out a document that says no parking? Um, we have something that we could put up along the road so that they all.
That's not our county.
Oh, right.
So I, my recommendation, Sue, is when you're at capacity in this plan and that you move, have a temporary uh, shelter or something for um, your your park attendant to say you can't come in closer, we're full.
Right.
Uh, the the thing is that we want to open up Jacob Myers Park. But we don't want to have it overrun and have the shots from, um, uh, the Southern California beaches, which were taken at 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 the ground level, showing a massive amount of people. But when you look overhead, they had their space in between them. But I don't want to have that conflict with news. What I don't, and and that's a, that's a real conflict. And the other thing, too, is that we draw the line and we say no, no, no. You can't come in. You come in and we'll have um, Ontel take care of you.
I think it'll be important when we put out that we're opening Jacob Myers, that we tell them we're limiting the number of cars. We will also not be accepting walk-ins so that we can limit the amount of people. Let them know beforehand so that they know, so that they, when they come, you can say, hey, we told you no walk-ins, we have to limit the number of people. That's important.
I think we can work on that messaging. I think it's just important to realize that, in a certain degree, you know, when we get down to the nitty gritty of actually enforcing, we can do so much. And then at a certain point, Sue's idea is that if it becomes unmanageable because there's so many people breaking the rules, then we, then she will have the authority, uh, she or I will have the authority to simply just close the park. And we'll, we'll know that it.
I agree with that.
I agree totally.
Yeah, I'm hoping maybe people will cooperate. Um, it's it's hard to know because the, a lot of these people are coming from far away. So when they drive from the barrier or where they come from and they get here and they can't get in, maybe they haven't seen our social media or or whatever. Um, that's when they get pushy. And that's where we don't want in that predicament where we're dealing with people that are just pushing. dealing with people that are just pushing their way in.
We went to Met Creek a couple of weekends ago and Abby wanted to go somewhere up in the mountain where she could see the city she wanted to paint. The first thing I did is I went to check, make sure those parks were open. People should be doing that also because all the websites will say whether the park is open or not. So if people are coming from far away and they find it closed, that's bad for them. I mean, they really need to be checking it because across the state, this has been closed, so.
Right.
Yep, we can't do anything with that.
I think we also need to be thinking about those cars that go over into River Cove. And uh, so that we can minimize, you know, whatever people are thinking about, you know, having fun at the river and then uh, you know, coming in the park that way. You know, getting into water and blocking up streets and parking on the streets and, you know, all the issues that we've discussed in the past.
So most of you are making, yeah, can I jump in or? Okay, so, uh, so I got a silly question for you, how does a dog social distance?
Well, we would limit, we don't, the dogs don't, but hopefully we would only limit so many people that be in the dog park. I think that might be at the next, I don't know if I have that on there. Um, we would only let maybe ten people in a dog park at a time where we would hope that they would spread out.
Well, I, I'll be, I'm, I don't know why we have to wait till the sixteenth, I'd be open to, I'd be okay opening it sooner than that. Uh, I do like the trail idea, uh, maybe the dogs unleash on trail, we could allow that, I don't know if the dog park necessarily, uh, only because an animal was the cause of the outbreak, so just, they're just, just issues uh, for me on that one. As far as the numbers, I, I do like the nurse, uh, for the lot, sixty and a twenty in the back. Um, and then everything else was stated as far as um, just completely closing it off as soon as we reach those nerves.
Right, there were on the slide too for, on this particular, maybe go to the next slide real quick, just so we see the whole picture. Uh, if large gatherings occur and crowds are too difficult to manage, Sean mentioned, we would close the park and tell CDC guidelines, are we evaluated? And we can open the park fully. If park regulations go well, slowly increase the number of cars and capacity as CDC guidelines allow. Uh, and note, the parking fee will need to cover the amount of staffing and security necessary to manage the park. If the need exceeds the fees collected, the plan will need to be reevaluated. So all of the services we start putting in place and a lot of those, um, vice mayor are not ready to be going into place until Saturday because we have to kind of get the schedules in place, uh, because we open the tip booth, we do all that, that's the only reason we wanted to start a couple of days, but um, everything relies on that parking fee. So if we don't let enough cars come in to have the security and the lift staff we need, take this work, I have to be really careful about that. But right now I figured it out and if we had sixty cars and twenty, we easily manage the, the services at that point.
Makes sense, thank you Sue.
And so that covers the factors, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, some of the uh, um, guidelines are on an hourly basis. Can we cover something similar to that, like we two hours or?
Yeah, our, our park aides are sanitizing those bathrooms because they're so used. I mean, they're doing that every, every couple of hours, um, we could increase, we have people there. At the park, we have people there, so we have two, two great park hosts. Uh, we have both park host sites, uh, two in each site and they are ready to help us with whatever we need as well.
All right, that is great to know.
The park is looking beautiful, it's so beautiful right now.
It hasn't been.
And we trail.
A question, our park hosts do have PP equipment?
Yes.
Thank you.
And training.
Thank you, very glad to hear that.
Okay, it sounds like we have a general consensus on that, do you want to move, move on?
I'm ready.
Sounds good to me.
Maybe we're ending the, we're ending the, the end here, so, um.
Okay, so the next, the next two are, are areas that Julia, our park supervi- uh, recreation supervisor and self really needs some direction because we're getting phone calls, we're getting, uh, we need to plan. We have staff that are needing to know what we're doing and that's our aquatics program and our day camps. Um, our, our programs are small compared to other cities. We feel that we can, if CDC and the city opens this up to where it is possible and we're not breaking any, any of the rules, we feel we can put a lot of those protocols in play, all the pro- protocols in place, um, to keep people safe. So we wanted to just ask what council thinks about the aquatics program and day camps, limiting the numbers, uh, as social distancing, disinfecting, taking all the precautions. Is this something we can move forward with or is this something that is off the table completely?
I just pulled up the CDC guidelines and it says there's no evidence that COVID nineteen can spread to people through the water as long as the disinfected and proper operation is done. So, um, I think social distancing, eliminating the number of swimmers is fine, um, I think it looks good.
In, in that, uh, with, if you maintain your chlorine, you're not going to transmit the, the virus. It's, you're outside the pool where you have to make ta- make sure you maintain uh, the proper sanitation, disinfectant, uh, the restrooms, um, but uh, Sue, you were on that, that one call where uh, the um, uh, the doctors were saying, you know, it, it should not happen, although anything is possible.
Right.
Uh, but um, reducing the number, um, I, I, and I think if you have swim lessons with total of twelve, you know, two, two instructors and ten um, students, should be easily to me, be maintained. You can still do the float with the hands, trying to get them to use their arms and their legs. But just make sure that the um, instructors don't get too close to the faces, especially when they're choking water and coughing. Um, you know, there, there's a lot of things that can go on, uh, on with it. But it's the same thing with your day camps. If you can have your day camps at ten participants and two ch- uh, um, staff members, everything should be, you know, as we're transitioning through two to three, should be okay. But, you know, everything is okay, but this virus isn't going to go away like some people think. It's going to be here until we get a vaccine, um, and even then, it's still going to be around.
And these are outdoors, we can take temps when people arrive, we can do all of those things. Um, we're perfectly capable of doing all of those, those precautions.
Sue, we got a question.
Our, our pool water is always really good chemically, so.
Sue, I got a question for you. Um, wh- what happens if somebody unfortunately, you know, drowns? Do we have equipment where it's not mouth-to-mouth?
No.
Well, yeah, we have the face mask, uh, we always have that, yes.
Just, just double checking.
That's a normal thing that we would use, yeah.
Right, I, I do like all these precautions, uh, I do like that we're going to maintain physical distancing, so I, I, I am okay with all these.
And, and I think kind of like you mentioned, Vice Mayor, on the other item, because this one comes up on that stage two no-no list, we'll work with the city attorney to be clear about our authority.
Yeah.
And Sue, and Sue's kind of, I gotta hand it to her, in anticipation of this and we are in a very uncertain time, already has sort of started working on trying to get together lifeguards, which is already, always really hard to do, so with some luck, um, it's actually funny, she said to me earlier, I don't know if she mentioned it, um, that a lot of our lifeguards are nursing students, um, so, uh, we have that going for us too. So as long as, um, so let's, it sounds like unless Councilmember Campbell or Barbara Martinez, do you have any issues with aquatics? Sounds like we generally have consensus on that.
No, it sounds good to me, I'm glad to see that we are, you know, uh, looking at this right now and limiting the numbers, so I think it'll, it'll work.
And so Sue, do you want to move on to day camps?
Okay, uh, same thing, day camps and aquatics are, are hand in hand, so I think if, if council is good with moving forward with aquatics and then day camps is same, they would be held outdoors, not indoors.
Yeah, I'd be okay with this also.
Sounds good. Yes.
Are you doing horseback riding?
Horseback riding?
Yeah, are you?
No.
And then I'm, I'm against day camps.
Okay, we can do that then, we'll get some horses.
All right.
So then, the next slide, um, these two groups are waiting to really hear what our decision is tonight. Um, we have Riverbank, uh, youth soccer, which is run by the Earthquakes. Um, it's a non, it's a private organization, but they use our sports complex. They have a hundred and forty kids that are wanting to start. They postponed their season, they are trying to start their season June ninth. And they're waiting to hear, they, their organization has the protocols in place, we don't really have anything to do with it. Um, but they wanted to know if they can move forward to use our fields. Same thing with Riverbank Youth Baseball, they need to use our fields at Castleburg Park. They postponed their season, they're hoping to run it in July. So those are the two that really want answers from us.
I think July is very easy for the baseball, softball. Um, soccer was one of the um, concerns that Dr. V had. When, although, you know, you're, you're social distancing, but when you tackle in soccer, your contact is immediate and it is very personal. Um. I, I, I think if you could hold off on soccer for additional two more weeks, make it towards the end of June. I think we'll be in, in phase three and there'll be very little discussion on, on, uh, other than maintaining the protocols, making sure they're healthy. But I don't see us getting through phase two in Stanislaus County, uh, until at least mid-June. And that's when they want to start, so their, their starting date would be probably with the opening date. And I would suspect the state would have um, eyes on the program.
I'd have to agree with the mayor on this one, I'd be for postponing both of them.
Not postponing, delaying.
Just delaying.
Delay first too, yeah.
What's that I'm wondering with the fields, because I know their field, they're private organization, but is there a liability on for us?
Yes.
This has to be great.
I think we should, what to?
Um, all right, I think we've made it to the last decision point.
Right, next slide. So the events are the ones that are probably the most concerning and I just listed the ones that we have in our activity guide that we publicized for. Movies in the park is one that we have at Jacob Myers and it comes up. I think first one is probably in late June. Um, we can generally have anywhere from one hundred to three hundred people there. We could limit the number, if council feels better about that, uh, to a hundred and space them out or less, um, or not have them at all. Um, movies at pool, we have not done that before, but we were going to do a dive-in movie, um, late June, I think, might be mid-June. Um, that one would probably, if I had to guess, I'd say anywhere from thirty to sixty people would probably show up. Uh, summer concerts, we've already moved because of planning issue, we've moved that already to August or September. So I think that one will buy us some time. And Cheese and Wine Festival is the big one that would happen in October and the planning really occurs all year. There's already about thirty to forty vendors signed up and we do have a contract with a group to run this and there's five thousand people a day, so. Those are the ones we wanted to kind of have a discussion on and, and see how much planning should we do, should we not do them?
Yeah, and I, council, I think it might be easiest to just start with the, with the large event, Cheese and Wine. You, you know, the feedback we've been receiving from the state and the governor is that there's no way that mass gatherings are going to be allowed and even into the fall. Uh, I think I mentioned in a email to all of you, the Santa Clara County is already having conversations with some of their major sports teams to not assume that they're going to be holding forty-niners games or something.
Well, they need a good team to be able to play. I would say that for the Cheese and Wine, um, we make that determination tonight that we are not going to move forward. I don't see um, a mass gathering in a confined space, which Cheese and Wine is, uh, because you have your fencing around, um, that is a non-starter. Your summer concerts, you limit where, you take the square footage, let's say it is fifty thousand square feet. You're going to limit it to um, a hundred different blanketed areas, families in different areas. Uh, I think you could do that. Movie at the pool, that may not be uh, wise to start that program this year. But movie at the park, the same thing with your summer concert. Even it up to where you're going to have blanketed areas uh, for families to be. But, but if you, if you open it up and have no distancing, that's where you're going to have uh, issues in the future, even if we're in phase three. Phase three still has a lot of limitations, so um, Cheese and Wine should be out, Movie at the Pool should be out. The concerts and the movies in the parks should be designed to where you, you might even tape them off. This is where one group is, this is where another group is, um. And, and you can get them, yeah, it's kind of um, uh, structuring what you're doing, but you still can have the good concerts, you can still have the good movies and, you know, we need to get release, even if it is a structured release.
Right.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Reeve here, so I'm in uh, actually total agreement with the mayor. I think movies in the park, we can do, physical distancing, um, movie at the pool, eh, I, I could see it working, but the mayor's right. I mean, do we, do we really want to add to the complications we're already, we're already trying to put, uh, struggling through? Uh, summer concerts, you said where it's pushed to August, so, and, and then with the physical distancing, I don't see an issue there as well. And then with the Cheese and Wine, uh, having to start running now, uh, just entering stage two, who knows where we'll be uh, in October? So um, I, I would, I would not be for moving forward with Cheese and Wine as well.
Councilmember Campbell, I agree totally with the Vice Mayor and Mayor.
Councilmember Fossey, uh, as much as it pains me, Sue, to say it out loud, Cheese and Wine Festival, I think is off. Um, all the others, I think we can easily uh, maintain the distance. The pool might be a little bit tricky, but I think the movies in the park, I, I think we can easily, you know, make sure they're, they're distancing apart and, and those can continue, I think.
Okay, my turn, Barbara Martinez. All right, so, yeah, like Cindy Fossey, Councilmember Fossey, I, I agree that Cheese and Wine, I hate to say no. Um, however, I understand, you know, um, the reason why we have to. And then I can see that moving the park and the summer concerts is absolutely doable. So I'm in agreement with those two. Movie at the pool, I don't think would be a good idea either, so. But I like what we have, following the guidelines with everything, I still think we need to str- stress the CDC guidelines uh, to, in order to uh, make those events happen.
Now, Sue, that being said, um, is there a way that you could get, look for sponsorships for nonprofits that participate? I, I have a, a nonprofit that I have to look for and I can't hold a, a gala and I can't hold, uh, you know, the, the community brunch that's coming, should be coming on up. But I'm looking for the sponsors that I can give credits to in the following years. Can we look for that type of um, help for our nonprofits that depend upon the Cheese and Wine? And have it a Cheese and Wine um, on a virtual ready type thing, nothing really out there except for, um, you know, uh, uh, Ireland Coles are sponsoring Cheese and Wine. uh, uh, Ireland pools are sponsoring Cheese and Wine for the nonprofits or whoever, uh, would be doing the sponsoring. Can you think about that?
Yes.
It doesn't have to be a lot, but it does give good social standing for all the participants that are, are, uh, sponsoring and give them good standing the, the next year.
We'll also, um, council, uh, just make sure that as we're planning any of these events in the summertime, that we're aware of what that threshold mass gathering is, so we don't exceed that. Um, you know, some cities have gotten really creative with different ideas, like, like maybe doing a drive at a parking, large parking lot or something, and so we'll kind of keep all those ideas in mind.
Do you have directions, Sue?
I do. Thank you very much.
Uh, Sue, thank you and your staff. Um, I know it's difficult and you're trying to be creative and you are creative. And, uh, the entire council appreciates the parking recreations and hopefully uh, we come out of this a lot stronger with all of our creative ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
All right, um, Annabelle, have we received any calls or written comments?
Mayor, we have not received any calls. Or let me double check here. There are no written comments.
All right. Uh, we provided guidance. I don't think there are emotions that we need to do on this. Is there, Annabelle?
No, there isn't, Mayor. Guidance has been, um, taken.
All right. Okay, um, while we hear the staff and council comments or reports at this time, I will open public comments for closed session on item 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4. Anyone wishing to comment on closed session items may send comments via email to thecityquick@riverbank.org. We are not taking, uh, phone calls at this, on this, these items. So we're going to move into item seven, consisting of staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a few quick reports this evening. Um, I wanted to, to, um, respectfully request that, you know, for members of the public that are watching, and when you're, uh, you know, communicating with staff, especially in utility billing, um, that, you know, we just respectfully ask that that beha-, you know, that interaction be civil. Unfortunately, we've had some uh, very frustrated folks and while we kind of understand that sometimes, um, you know, having spent a lot of time doing customer service in my life, it's very difficult to help people when, um, there's straight up uncivil behavior going on. Um, and so, you know, we're here to help you, we're going to work for you, but we would request that, you know, you, you help us help you by, at least helping us treat each other with respect or communicating. Um, and then the other comment is that, um, we receive a number of calls from people that have, that want, um, public related resources and, um, want to transfer directly to those resources, and what we're reminding everyone is that we don't, we're in the same phone street, and so you can need to call 211 if you want that information. And they will direct you immediately toward you to go. Uh, finally, um, the council, they've seen some comments, uh, that I made that showed up in a S O B article a couple of weeks ago regarding the city's finances, part of a larger article. Um, to, to piggyback on that, we're going to be doing, um, we're, we're already in the process of prepping, uh, our budget. Our, our strategy for the time being, because there are so many unknowns, is, uh, to propose a placeholder budget in June and try to make some, uh, we have already made some assumptions based on what we think some of our shortfalls will be for this fiscal year, but what we'd really like to do is get some actuals and, uh, be able to come back with something amended. Um, and hopefully, uh, balanced. Um, we are, we've put into place a number of different concepts of, of how we can, um, make changes if, if things get, um, really scary, but uh, we're taking a, a positive approach for the time being and looking at our opportunities, um, and hoping for best, uh, and we will see, um, how that reflects itself in our revenues here the next couple of months. And that's all I have to report.
Any other staff reports, Sean?
Uh, no, no.
Okay. Councilmember Rossi?
Um, at this time I have, uh, no comments except, uh, stay safe out there and take care of your family.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Campbell, please.
I'd just like to thank the community because I think the majority of our community is trying to follow the guidelines and that makes it easier for our sheriff's department and also for the council.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Barbara Martinez. You have to be off mute. Berlin?
Yes, I would like to thank Sue for her forward thinking and trying to help us to, uh, make some sense of our stay-at-home order, because I know everyone is just as tired as I am about being at home and trying to maintain. But it's for, um, the best of the community and for the safety of everyone, so Sue, thank you. And also for Sean for all your hard work, even though you were at home, but you were still out there and, uh, for myself for just being in cover for everything. Um, and council, we have had to make some very hard decisions, so I want to thank you for us working together and moving the city forward. We may have some, um, some of our folks out there in our community that think we're not moving fast enough. We just want to make sure that the decisions that we make are good for everyone in the city. And I have been on, still trying to, uh, be on top of a lot of webinars and listening to what other cities are doing, the state and also the White House. I've been on some of those calls too to try and understand how all of this, uh, you know, the guidelines and everything that are, are given to us, how it will help us to move our city back to being reopened. So just have patience and I thank everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
Uh, thank you. Uh, first of all, thank you, uh, Councilmember Barbara Martinez for the comments and I'll echo those to staff as well. Uh, so for any, I'd like to encourage, uh, the residents and anybody watching, uh, on two things. Uh, the first one, get tested. If you, uh, if you go to standemergency.com, uh, there's a link there. We have three testing locations in the county, uh, and Project Baseline just expanded theirs for anybody 18 and older. So I'm assuming anybody 18 and older can get an appointment and can get tested. Um, and the, and the second thing is to, just to continue, uh, wearing face coverings out when you're out for es- uh, going for essentials. Again, 60% of, uh, cases show no symptoms, um, so you're wearing it to protect others and we're trying to stop this, uh, stop this spread, um, so let's look out for each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, as we move forward, we need to really be aware of FIBA funding and how we can recoup everything that we possibly can that deals with the COVID-19. There's funding sources for the $2.2 trillion that we are, we can collect, although we cannot collect it, um, individually at a 500,000 or above, but the county has that funding available and keep asking for it. They have $96 million that we should be able to tap into. Um, we're moving forward still. COVID-19 is not the only issue we have. To maintain health for this city, we need to have more equitable tax sharing agreement with the county. And we have sent, we are sending a letter to the county and, um, requesting that our, um, uh, tax sharing agreement be renegotiated, that will provide, uh, greater funding for the cities and also for the county. Uh, we're being more proactive than the county. We're just hoping that we can get over the hump before one July, which is our next fiscal year. And we're not hoping for the best, we're planning for the best and we have the best planners in, in this area. And again, there is other funding that's coming on down, so we need to encourage, uh, that funding. 60% of the US population lives in communities under 50,000. Yet, all the funding went to communities above 500,000. So there's a big disparity. There should be a new, uh, uh, initiative coming on down from Congress, and I would encourage us individually and collectively to say, uh, that funding is necessary because 60% of the people, if they don't get funding, they're paying for the rest of the country in the future when those trillions of dollars become, uh, dues. All right, at this time, I'm going to move to closed session. Before I move to closed session, uh, Annabelle, do we have any calls?
Mayor, we were going to take written comments and there are no written comments.
No written comments? Okay, so I'll read, uh, the, uh, closed session. You're right, I said that. So, uh, the first one is item 8.1, threat to public services or facilities pursuant to government code 54957, consultation with City of Riverbank Director of Emergency Services. Item 8.2, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8, property 062 dash 031 dash 001 through 007. Agency negotiator Sean, City Metro. Property negotiator Ametis Inc. Under negotiation, price, terms, agreement for both. Item 8.3, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo of government code section 54956.9, number of cases, two potential cases. Item 8.4, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9 Alpha, name of case, Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District versus the City of Riverbank and D O E S 1 dash 20. Stanislaus County Superior Court Case Number CB 19 dash 004402. And now, Annabelle, I'll ask one more time, have we received any written comments?
Mayor, we have not received any written comments.
All right, we are now adjourned to closed session.